It's 12:04 by my clock and we might as well get started. Our very first candidate is Tracy Bailey. Tracy, you're on.
Well, thank you. So for some of you, this is a little bit of a repeat because for those other candidates that don't know, I'm actually a member of the Rotary Club. So we talked about this the other day. But let me first just say, I appreciate everyone that has thrown their hat in. Having been on the school board once before, I can promise you this is a thankless job, that no matter how good you do, there are going to be those that are upset by it. It is one of those things that until you're sitting in that room, until you go through the process, you really don't know what you're going to get into. But much like eight years ago when I ran, it's very simple. I've always felt that there's a responsibility that we have as people that if you, if good people don't run, then you're going to get what you get. And sometimes that's not necessarily a good thing. So now that I've got all seven of my children through school, I don't have anybody playing sports. I don't have anybody trying to get a job. I don't have anybody working in the school system. So I truly don't have an axe to grind. And I don't think anybody that's running feels that way, that they have an axe to grind. They just simply want to try to make a difference. All of us want to try to make a difference. In doing that, it's an understanding of how the process works and whose roles are whose roles. The school board is there in my mind, as I've always said, is we are the sail on the ship. We're there for the big picture. We want to make sure that we're going in the right direction, that we're being fiscally responsible, that we're holding people accountable for what their job is and that they're doing a good job, that we know where we want to go and what we want to become. And then we allow the administrators to administer. The worst thing that can happen is to have board members that want to go rogue and try to administer, get the administrators to do things that they want, pet projects that they want. One of the things that if I get elected this time around that I really want to again, try to, try to get accomplished that I didn't, don't think that I did a very good job of last time, was to start having discussions about things before, 10 minutes before the meeting. There seemed, there was always this urgency, this fire that needed to be put out constantly, that we could never accomplish anything. So I think it's going to be important this time around that we have some kind of written board plan of this is our parameters that we want to work from. This is, this is what our job is. This is what the administrators' jobs are. And we stay in our lane, that we know what we want to accomplish. And so that we can have discussions. One of the, one of the projects that I had when I was on the board before was I pushed to be able to allow kids that were home schooled to be able to play sports in the school. And I laid out a whole litany of things and reasons why and financially what it could bring to us. No one wanted to have the discussion. So I kind of forced the issue to have a small committee, which is allowed, having three members of the board sit in committee, discuss it, and then be able to bring that information back to the board as a whole and have it, be able to then at that point have an educated discussion and be able to vote on it. Those things, there's a lot more of those things that need to happen, whether it's the discussion about turf or whether it's the discussion about what we do about, about special education, what we do about being able to raise teacher salaries, whatever the case may be, understanding that we need to have more discussion about things. And somebody's got to keep me on time here because you know, all the Rotarians know that once I get to talking, it's hard to shut it off. So that's really what I'm all about is truly just, I feel like I have broad shoulders. I feel like I have the ability to take complex matters and boil them down and be able to understand them and be able to make a decision. And when, when it comes to school board or any political office, you have to trust the person that you put in the position. Do you trust that individual to be able to make decisions based on the information that they're given? And then be able to live with that, knowing that you may not know all that I know, but if you trust me, know that I'm doing the best thing for you and not because I have an axe to grind or because I want to be able to make change that benefits me. So that's me and that's why I'm running for school board.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rowena, you've got yourself turned off.
I know, I realized that. I never mute myself in the night. Alex, are we good on time? Are we ready to start with Ken Appney? Ken?
Hi there. Thanks for asking me here to explain why I want to be a school board member. My short answer is this is my way to serve the community. My long answer details what I believe is required of a member of the school board. I believe a school board member must be responsive and receptive to parents, staff, students, and the community at large, encouraging an open dialogue. The board must take input from all groups and weigh all the presented facts before making a decision. Recent history has shown us the board needs to verify these presentations in detail and not be afraid to ask for more information. When elected, a board member is a trustee of the community and must be accessible and willing to collaborate with all members of the community, including NLCS staff and teachers. Teachers have been told that they cannot talk to school board members about school issues. If they do, they, and they feel retribution from the administration, someone needs to be held accountable for any acts of reprisal. Being a bully at any level is not acceptable. This controlling policy must change. A school board member must build public understanding, support, trust, and participation within the system, especially from those who provide the education. My efforts as a board member would center on serving all the students in the community. Our schools are here to serve the educational needs and to develop the character of the students in an environment of mutual respect, dignity, and trust. All stakeholders, all NLCS personnel, certified and non-certified, support staff and management, as well as students, must be partners in this endeavor if we are to be successful. A key issue for school, school boards is to create a long-term vision, reflecting the needs of the students, the wishes of the voters, and the consensus of the community, mapping a course that provides the necessary opportunity students need to reach their full potential. The board is responsible for establishing and maintaining a structure supporting the system, empowering the staff and providing the leadership to accomplish our mission. It is difficult to provide leadership and carry out a vision when a district lurches from crisis to crisis like a ship without a rudder. Our crises have included losing a superintendent, quickly hiring an interim, and then extending that contract to three years, a rushed consolidation, and just recently borrowing over $5 million for, among other things, artificial turf. These ideas have adversely affected the public's confidence in the board. I strongly believe we have tremendous teachers and staff working with our children. We must reestablish morale among all NLCS employees and work to return harmony, mutual respect, and most importantly, trust throughout the organization. These issues must be addressed and resolved before we can address teacher retention, teacher pay, student proficiency, student funding, and the list goes on. Education takes place in the classroom and the board's efforts must focus on enhancing and enriching what goes on there. And for the record, here's my stance on some recent issues. Consolidation, I believe the whole process was rushed through with very poor communication to the public. First, it was presented as a financial decision, but that data was incomplete. Next, it was based on student numbers and those numbers were shown to be inaccurate. Then it was presented as an increased opportunities for students along with finances. I'm still not sure what basis they used to determine their final vote. And you have to wonder how confident in the data of the final, final presentation were the four who voted for it. I will never be a rubber stamp for any administration. Charter schools, I'm not against charter schools. Parents have the right to choose where their children attend school, whether that be a district school, a private school, charter school, or homeschooling. However, charter, charter schools do affect funding for North Lawrence Community Schools. Indiana tuition dollars of approximately $6,000 per student follow the student. A loss of 100 students would cost a corporation $600,000 a year. I do believe the reason we are seeing charter schools forming is a direct consequence of the relationship between the NLCS administration, the questionable consolidation process, and the communication to the public. Something needs to be changed or the public trust will continue to slide. Lastly, artificial turf and the facilities improvement loan of 5.2 million. The whole process was never fully and accurately communicated to the public. I'm not saying I'm against it. I just would want to see clearer details and cost of need, let the public know. A lot of people had told me I need a slogan. If I had one, it would be transparency with clarity and accountability. Thanks for asking me here and giving me the opportunity to answer the question, why are you running for a school board seat? I ask for your support in this bid because it's time for a change, not just for the school board, but also for students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. That is very clear, very clear.
Yes. Our third candidate is, hold on a second, Wendy Miller. Go Wendy.
Okay, thank you. Can you guys hear me? My name is Wendy True Blood Miller. Thank you again, as with the rest of the candidates, for allowing us to have this forum. By way of introduction, I'm a lifelong resident of Lawrence County. I grew up in Judah, went to Needmore and Olytic, and I graduated from B&amp;L in 2000. And I have lived in Bedford my whole life. I have two kids. My daughter Amelia just graduated from B&amp;L and is in Oklahoma City at college. And then I have a fourth grader, my son Rowan, and I'm married to Tim. I'm a former runner, a current cyclist, and I'm a mom, I'm a nurse, I'm a professor. And the reason that I'm here today to talk about why I'm running is because I think it's necessary. And as some of the other candidates have talked about, there has been a disturbing trend in what we have seen in our, in our school board over the past couple of years, particularly in the last year. And why I decided to run, I actually ran in 2012, and why I'm running again, it hadn't planned on it, but I really feel that there is a need for community members who are really focused on representing the community interests in the school board. So in terms of my platform to just briefly talk about it. So my, I'm a professor in the School of Nursing and I'm a scientist and I do research for the National Institutes of Health and other mechanisms. And so everything that I think about in terms of what we should do for kids and teachers and communities and schools is evidence-based. So what I haven't seen happen in the last couple of years in the school board is really using evidence to drive decisions that are best for children. I think a lot of times the decisions that are being made are best for adults and not for the actual student-centeredness that we need to have. So the things that I would really like to work on, I would like to restore transparency, professionalism, and responsibility to the school board. I have been very taken aback by sort of the, the closed-offness of the school board and the central administration in the last year or so. When the public is coming to the board or teachers are coming to the board with concerns, they are, you know, a timer is set and, and the board is not allowed to give any feedback. I've actually had that happen to me when I went to a school board meeting to talk about some issues that I was concerned about, where it, there's just this divide between the, the school board and the actual community that we're representing. So if I am elected, what you can expect from me is someone who will be very, very involved in getting the community's wishes and desires about what's going on. I, if you email me or you call me, I want to listen. I want to elevate that issue in front of the boards and not just come up the way to make you be quiet. That's really important to me, that transparency. I also think it's extremely important that we start focusing on equity of opportunities for kids. So a lot of what you're hearing right now from our central admin is about equity of outcomes. We want everybody to look the same at the end of the day. But most kids are not right in the middle. They're not right in the mean. There are kids to the left and right of the mean in their learning abilities, based on where they live. Those kids should have the same opportunities. So rather than being focused on turning out the same outcomes, I want to leverage and utilize our teachers, our very talented teachers, who have the ability to tailor the curriculum that they deliver to students, to give them the freedom to do that. Right now, our teachers are being asked to do things to teach in the middle of a pandemic with all of these rules, but then they're not being given the support that they need. I know teachers are having to put up Amazon wish lists for hand sanitizer for books just to get the things that they need for their classroom. And I think that's absurd. I do not agree that we should right now be talking about installing a multimillion-dollar turf. I don't think there's anything wrong with turf in and of itself, but when you have teachers who can't, don't have a competitive wage and also have to ask the community to sort of crowdsource their classrooms, I am not interested in talking about installing a very expensive turf or something along that lines. So if you have questions for me, you can find me on Facebook, Wendy True Blood Miller for a School Board. I am very transparent. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And thank you again for letting us come today.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yeah, thank you. Brian Pemberton.
Hey, thanks, Rowena. First, I would like to thank the Rotary Club for putting this forum together and allowing us to speak here today. I appreciate your time and involvement. I would also like to commend my fellow candidates, as Tracy alluded to, for being here and putting themselves out there to run. It is an important and somewhat thankless position, but a strong public education is the cornerstone of a strong democracy, which cannot continue without engaged citizens willing to serve. A little about me, I'm a lifelong resident of Lawrence County. I'm married with three sons. Two of my sons currently attend North Lawrence Schools. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree in accounting from Franklin College and a Master's in Business Administration and Finance from Ball State University. I have a strong sense of community, which has led me to volunteer in various capacities over the years, such as being on the Bedford Area Chamber of Commerce Board. I was the treasurer of the Thornton Memorial Boys Club Board. I was on the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence County Board. I'm a current member of the IU Health Quality and Safety Board. I was a member of the NLCS Visionary Committee, and I coached youth baseball and basketball teams for over 20 years. There are several reasons why I'm running as a candidate for NLCS School Board. First, I have a vested interest with two sons attending North Lawrence Schools. I want schools to provide the best education and opportunities possible to all NLCS students. Second, as I previously mentioned, I was a member of the NLCS Visionary Committee. My participation in this critical group heightened my awareness of the problems facing not only our school system, but many of our neighboring school systems too, such as declining enrollment, underutilized facilities, as well as exorbitant operating costs. As a committee, our goal was to help lay out a vision of financial stability that would allow for increased teacher compensation and high-quality, consistent offerings for students, both in and out of the classroom. I enjoyed this work because it had purpose. Finally, I have the professional background necessary to support our schools, as evidenced by my advanced degrees in accounting and finance. I've worked the last 30 years in finance at area manufacturing companies with budgets similar in size to NLCS. My education and experience provide me with a skill set uniquely positioned to be a vital resource to a school system facing challenging financial times. I know the decision to close schools was not an easy one. A lot of thought and consideration went into it. Previous feasibility studies recommended consolidating schools, but no actions were taken to reduce operating expenses by previous school boards. As a financial advisor, it was easy to see that NLCS was not taking steps toward financial stability, which limited their ability to attract and retain employees. The school system was burning cash out of its rainy day fund at the rate of 1.1 million per year in the 2019-2020 school year, which meant in about four years, the schools would burn through the 4.5 million in the fund, not to mention the acceleration of spending with COVID. Rainy day funds should be used for one-time expenses or unprecedented times like we are currently experiencing. I do not know for certain, but I can only imagine the financial hardship NLCS would be experiencing at this time if cost-saving measures had not been taken with the onset of the COVID pandemic. It was apparent to me the best course of action was to make the tough decisions that would right-size the school system, to close underutilized facilities, and allow for the attraction and retention of NLCS employees through increased compensation. All NLCS schools now allow the opportunity for teachers to collaborate and support each other, which leads to the implementation of best practices, and that benefits all students. In addition, all NLCS students now have consistent offerings in curriculum and extracurricular activities across all schools, which was not the case prior to this school year. A key issue for school boards is to create a long-term vision and mapping a course that provides the necessary opportunities students need to reach their full potential. Board is responsible for establishing and maintaining a structure that supports this vision, empowers the staff, and provides leadership. Education takes place in the classroom and the board's efforts must focus on enhancing and enriching what goes on there. Our best hope is a school system that reflects the ambitions and values of its community. In conclusion, I know I can make a positive impact, so I humbly ask for your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Very good.
Our last speaker is Janice Pendergrass. Janice, you're on. Welcome. Turn on your, turn on your mic. You're muted, Janice.
You're muted.
Yeah, there you go.
All right. First of all, I want to thank you all for allowing us to be here today. And I want to thank Mike, the other candidates for running. And I look forward to a great and successful run with you guys. I wanted to first start off by saying that the reason why I am running is because, as all of us have mentioned already, that we're running because we have a great concern for our community and for our children that are, are going through so many things right now as far as with the school system. The main thing that I've heard and as well as with myself, we're worried about the concern with transparency. Transparency of not knowing what's going on, the unknown has always been a big thing with us as far as what's going on, what's going to happen next. We know that so far, the North Lawrence community system has done so many, made so many different changes as far as with this consolidation with the school system. And we know that it's been going on for years, but I think the sudden change of it happening within urgency urgently has caused us to wonder why now and who made those big decisions. And so now we're sitting here facing, what has it done to our children? And so we're concerned with whether or not our children, how is it affecting our children? And so over this past weekend, I had the opportunity to go out to a couple of the events and I actually spoke to some of the childrens. And the children have said that they're concerned because they're falling behind even more so than they had before. And so that's who we're concerned with is the children. So what, what have we done with our children? And so now we have to sit and say, not what we can do as far as changing the past, but what can we do moving forward? So that's, that's where I'm at now, is what are we going to do to make things better? Not what can we do to change the past, but what can we do to make things better? So we're looking at transparency. And then now we're moving as far as the teachers. What, how can we help the teachers that are working with those children? And so I've spoken to some of the teachers with their concerns. We're dealing with an epidemic right now. We're putting the teachers in harm's way. We're dealing with them going in there and then having to come back home and affect their families maybe. What type of precautions are we placing as far as with them? Or do we have a COVID plan in place for them? I don't think we do. So that's a concern for me. Then we have to say, what about online learning? I don't think we've even really addressed that. We gave them Chromebooks, but Chromebooks are only good when you have internet services. And from speaking with the administration office, we've also noticed that they've only given out 100 internet hotspots. But there's over 950 students that are doing online learning. So 100 hotspots don't go very far. So that's another concern for me. So we need to look at that. Then we're talking about the AstroTurf. And I've asked this question quite often. When we're talking about the AstroTurf, we have to look at the pros and the cons with the AstroTurf. Well, is there a grant, is it grant-related? I don't think we have that answer yet. I'm still looking into that. I would like to know that. But if it's grant-related, then we really don't have to be too concerned with that part of the revenue. But if it is, then we have to think about it. Is that something that we can look at a referendum for? So there's some questions that we, we need to be asking as far as how are we actually looking at the budget part of this whole thing? So I'm concerned with the budget of the, of moving, of how we're going to move forward. Can't change the past, but we can definitely make changes in the future. And the other thing that I had a chance to speak to a couple of young, young students, is they're concerned with the distancing. And I apologize, I should have turned my phone off. They're concerned with the social distancing on the bus. I think right now we have almost 40 students on a bus. Are they wearing their masks? What type of monitoring are we doing on the bus? Then let's think about safety programs. I believe Mitchell still have a safety program in their schools. Do we have that in our North Lawrence community school system? I'm not sure about that. So some of the other issues are, what about, do we have, what are we doing about the COVID programs, programs at, during lunchtime? Those are some of the issues I'm concerned with. And what are we doing about our after-school programs? So I have more questions than I do answers at this time. But those are major issues that we need to be looking at. What are we going to do moving forward? So my, my is more moving forward concern. Did I hear someone say something?
Sorry, yeah, my, my five-minute timer went off, so I was just given the warning.
I'm sorry. So if, if anyone have any other questions or anything like that, please feel free to contact me at, like, Janice for School Board.
Thank you, Janice.
Okay, time for questions. Who wants to ask the first question?
Today was the first time I heard that there was a problem with retention of teachers. What's the reason for that?
Okay, so in order to answer these questions, you get a minute apiece. And rather than allowing the, you know, Tracy to start again, we're going to start with Ken and we'll run through it. That'll be Wendy, Brian, Janice, and then Tracy at the end. Ken?
Yes, retention teachers were, I believe, the North Lawrence Community School System, there's 289 school districts, give or take, and we're their 36th largest. And yet, money-wise, what the, what the school system receives from the state, we're in the mid-150s. So teachers are leading for higher salaries that they can get elsewhere. A lot of them are taking early retirement. A lot of them are leaving the system to go to other jobs that pay better. And they don't see much of a future right now. A lot of their, like, the raises, if they get a 2% raise, it'll be a 2% stipend at the end of the year instead of a 2% raise on the base salary. I don't think any of us would want to be treated that way in the jobs. At least, I'm retired, I never got a raise like that, never would. It's just not fair to the teachers. And of course, their, their benefit package continues to increase every year. So they're looking for ways to make more money like all of us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ken. Who do I say is going next? Sorry, Wendy.
Yeah, so I would agree with the things that Ken brought up. A lot of it is about the ability to have a livable wage. But I think a lot of it for, I'm friends with a lot of teachers. I know a lot of teachers, is that they are not being respected as professionals. And I think that is something that is, the money is very important and their ability to take care of their families and pay their health insurance. But we also have a situation where we are giving them very strict guidelines, like with the pandemic with, with COVID and what they have to do and when they have to do it. And we're telling them what curriculum they have to deliver to students, but we're not giving them any of the professional respect and courtesy that we give people who are experts in their field. And our teachers here are fantastic. And what, what you'll hear when you talk to teachers is this year, you know, I can't have a refrigerator in my room. I can't have a poster on my wall. I, you know, they're not allowed to have devices that might cost electricity. And I think it's just been a chipping away at their professional identities. It has been one of the main reasons that we're seeing this exodus of teachers for other places where they are more appreciated.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, thank you. I believe Ken touched on a lot of the same topics I would talk about. You know, I will say that I was, like I said, I was on the visionary committee and we had, I believe, six meetings, three hours each. So we spent a lot of time talking about a lot of different topics. But one of the things that we kept coming back to was the compensation of teachers and how they had a hard time not only retaining teachers, but, but attracting new teachers because they could drive to Brownstown and make 8,000 more a year than staying in the North Lawrence system. So that was a real problem. And as he touched on, that they pay stipends. So I think this year is the first year they've given a raise in a long time. But you know, if you just get a stipend at the end of the year instead of the raise in your base, then you lose the compounding effect of that raise over time. So I think it is an important point to bring up and to talk about because, you know, we don't want to overpay, but we want to be competitive so that we can attract and retain teachers.
Thank you. And Janice?
I pretty much agree with what everyone has said is with, about the teachers. It is hard to attract teachers or keep them because when they can go somewhere else and get better pay, of course, they're going to do that. But some of them are staying just because of the community connections that they have. And so they're staying here, but at the same time, you have to look at reality and say, well, if I have a home or I have a child, then I'm going to go somewhere else and try and, of course, I have to live. And so they're moving on. But they're definitely have not been getting paid the same wages as other teachers in somewhere else. And I seem to have what they call a 20-step phase. And I think they have what they call a 20 step phase that they're using and they've not been getting to that phase, probably one phase or two phases at a time.
Thank you, Janice. Okay, Tracy. Where's Tracy?
I agree with everything that's been said. And I will say, I really feel like the overarching reason we've lost teachers has been pay. And if we go back and look at the reasons that what caused that, it really was the perfect storm. I was on the board when we were looking at this. And I will tell you that, that right when I got off the board, we looked at, at the financials and if everything stayed the way that it was by 2021 to 2022, we were going to bleed out and be bankrupt. And it was really a perfect storm situation because of the Affordable Healthcare Act, because we had buildings that, that were under, there wasn't enough students in there to, to make it feasible to, to keep those buildings, because of the number of teachers that were maxed out on the contract, because we didn't want to riff anybody, all of those things. And then on top of it, the number of students that we had lost over the, the last five years. And that came from everything from industries leaving, people moving away, dropouts. And, and they have done some really good things to help that with starting the academy, starting to give kids other options as opposed to just saying, you know, we're expelling you or we're moving you or you're wanting to drop out, there's no options for you, go away. We're starting to give them more options. So it has, it, it took about a decade to get to where we are. It's going to take a little bit of time, but it's got to be a plan set in place to be able to get to the point where we're paying our teachers so that we're not, as Ken said, you know, in the bottom, bottom part of that 36 largest schools, we're probably at the bottom of all pay. And I know we are in, in the surrounding areas. If North Lawrence Community School Systems has the lowest pay. So it's definitely an area that has to be addressed.
Thank you. Do we have another question? Somebody wanted, want to ask these candidates?
I would just like to know what you see your role as being a school board member and being a leader in the community? So what do you think your responsibilities would be and how do you see yourself as a leader?
All right, we'll start with Wendy.
Thank you. That's a great question. So I, I think as a school board member, any kind of elected official at the local level, you truly are a representative for the community. And that is how I would see myself as a representative for community members, people, teachers, people with kids, taxpayers, and really the voice of the community as it, as it relates to our school system. And in terms of leadership, I think the best way to lead in that situation is to listen and to validate and to really do some hard work and find out the answers to people's questions and to ask the hard questions and to put yourself out there. I mean, leadership is putting yourself out there to represent everyone, even though it might not always be easy. I have no problem asking hard questions and, and hearing difficult answers and, but mainly being a representative for my community and finding out what it is that they want for their school system.
Thank you, Wendy. Brian?
Sorry, had to unmute there. Yeah, so as I mentioned in my speech, you know, volunteerism, I volunteered a lot throughout my life on, on various boards to try to apply my expertise to their situations and coached a lot of teams. So I, I think I've utilized a lot of leadership over the years in, in doing those sorts of things. I think another thing that a board member has to do is listen to all the stakeholders, whether it's, you know, the teachers, the students, the parents, the staff, or just the community at large. You know, and making tough decisions. Being on the visionary committee, we were looking at some really tough issues and I didn't really envy the board members at the time with the decisions that they were faced with, because they were faced with some really tough decisions. But, you know, I feel like in the end, they, they showed the leadership that they needed to do to, to take us down a path that moves us forward as far as increasing the teacher's compensation and, and really providing those consistent offerings across all the schools for the kids. So I, I feel like those are sort of the important things to that.
Thank you, Brian. Janice?
I keep it on mute. And I think one of the things that Wendy said that was really great is that asking the hard questions. And you have to get out there and you have to put yourself out on the front line. You're the frontline worker and you definitely have to ask the hard questions. I think one, another thing to do is to, sometimes you have to just go and do like surveys, survey your, your community and find out what it is that they want. How, if you're going to represent them, you have to get out there and find out who are they and what is it that they need? What, what do you want me to do? It's not always about you because you internalize it and you personalize it, but it's, if you're going to represent them, then you have to ask them, what is it that you need me to do? And find out what their great concerns are, reaching in and reaching out, working hard, being committed, being accountable, and dependable. Those are the main things.
Thank you, Dennis. Tracy?
So I'm going to say ditto to everything that everybody said. And, and I'm going to tell you that one of the roles that I think that I need to play if elected to the board again, we need to remember, and I'm going to say this to all the people that are running, you're one of seven. You can have all the great ideas and all the things that you want to do, but if you are putting yourself out there and not working together with the other members of the board, nothing gets done. So the role that I want to be is to be able to try to have a, a commonality with everyone, to be able to have good discussion, being able to agree to disagree on things, being able to have discussions that allow us to be able to really research and understand. And if, if I'm wrong, admit it. If I realize that, that I may not completely agree with it or understand it, but I'm willing to go with it, that I think that we can make it work, then that is my role, is to try to help bring continuity and being able to establish good feelings among all board members. And that's, that's one of the things I will tell you is it's a hard thing to do, a hard thing to do.
Thank you, Tracy. Ken?
Yes, I'll echo everything that everybody else has said. I would like to, I know you're, you're working part of this as a team and this, this would require me to go to, I'd want to go to all the schools, visit, I want to talk to the teachers, I want to know what the teachers need and know that, that they know that they have help on the school board if they, if we can provide it. And as Tracy said, we're just one of seven. So we need to work, part of my work experience was to lead the quality system at the local GM plant. And we had to get 800 people thinking the same way. And we ended up leading GM throughout the whole corporation with the lowest numbers in non-accounts. I won't get into all that, but I, I like working as a team and I hope people feel that I'm open and they can come and talk to me.
Thank you, Ken. So I'm going to ask the last question unless there's another Rotaryian who has a burning question they'd like to ask. And that is, what in your experience do you feel, and I know, Ken, you just mentioned one thing, but do you feel particularly prepares you to serve effectively on the NLCS school board? And the first person to answer this time is Brian.
Thanks, Rowena. As I had mentioned previously, I feel like I've kind of been preparing my whole life for this, just with my, the degrees I have in accounting and finance, and I've worked at, you know, for 30 years in, in accounting and finance for different manufacturing companies over the years. And, and it's part of that role in, in those years was managing through times of really tight cash flow, dealing with the downturn in real estate of 2008 to COVID. And, and just being a part of manufacturing companies where they are capital intensive businesses, cash flow is king. And just being on the visionary committees, learning the financial situation that the schools were facing, just it piqued my interest a little bit because it was kind of in my, in my wheelhouse. And so I feel like I have a lot to offer with the experience that I've had that way.
Thank you, Brian. Janice?
I think that I, I, I bring a lot, I would bring a lot to the school board because I, I started the birth this mission, of course, from the ground up. And with my educational background as the public administration and in nonprofit management, and then because I serve the community in that capacity with birth this mission and serving the elderly as well as the young people in the community, I get a chance to find out what it is that they need. So I'm hearing their stories daily, even at our events, you know, I hear their stories all the time. And so I'm, I'm an ear for them. I advocate with them, advocate for them. And I believe that because I can advocate on the board for them as well.
Thank you. Tracy?
Um, you know, I've always felt like I have a, a, a strong internal feeling about what is right and what's wrong. There are some things that, you know, you can't explain it, you just know that it's right or you just know that it's not, it's not right. I bring that with me and the ability to be able, I feel like with my experience and throughout life and always being in something is, is people facing, that I have the ability to listen, to hear, and then to be able to take that information and, and put it in a form to be able to explain it to others. Everybody's kind of said this in one way or the other today, that one of the biggest challenges I think that everybody in the community has, and anyone that's called, called me or contacted me, has felt like when I've explained things to them, if they've said, well, if somebody had explained it that way, I wouldn't have had the problem that I have now. So can we, can I take information? Can I boil it down and then be able to explain it in a way that others will understand? And I feel like that's one of my strong suits, as well as just the fact that busy people tend to get things done. I'm an extremely busy person. Do I have other things that I could be doing other than serving on the school board? Absolutely. But I'm willing to go in there and do what needs to be done for that four-year term or eight years or however long I decide that I, I want to be a part of it. So I feel like that's what, that, and the fact that I've been on the board and I know a little bit more and I will tell every one of them, there's education opportunities out there and that four years really isn't long enough to get a real feel for how to be an effective board member. It takes, it takes a couple of terms to really get your head around what, how it all is different.
Thank you, Tracy. Ken?
Yes, as I said, I was highly involved in our quality system there at the plant. I graduated from Purdue way back in 1973 with a degree in industrial engineering. Anybody knows anything about industrial engineers, we're all very logical, we're all very detail oriented. I believe in setting goals. I believe in setting goals that you can measure and see, see that you are reaching that goal. And if you're not reaching those goals, what, you need to put in some type of corrective action and you need to monitor that on a regular basis. I, I grew up, like I said, I spent 40 years at GM. I was a big believer in the quality system we had. And I, I learned to work with a team. I learned you have to compromise. As Tracy says, there have to be times you say, hey, I'm wrong, you're right. And I'm more than willing to do that, hopefully not too many times, but I, I look forward to having the opportunity to work with fine people. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. And Wendy, you get to finish this off here.
Sure. So I think I have two aspects of myself that really lend my experience to being on this board. The first is I'm a professor at Indiana University in the School of Nursing. So I'm seeing education, higher education from the back end, what we're hopefully preparing a lot of our students for, education in the workforce. So I see that from that perspective, which I think is really unique. And also in that academic setting, working in teams is something that I do all the time. I have research teams and I'm used to dealing with conflict. One thing that happens a lot in academia is different, different positions and opinions coming together and working through that. And secondly, I'm a mom, you know, I have two kids. I really value the education for our community. I understand the absolute importance of the connection between community and education. And so as a mom, I'm motivated. You know, one of my kids is already graduated, but all the kids are all moms' kids. And so I, I feel like as, as a mom, as a parent, that really puts that fire in my belly to be on this board to do what's best for kids.
Thank you. Does anyone else from the Rotary Club have anything they want to add here or ask? Ray, turn on your mic. Ray? Oh, well.
Okay, I got her on. Sorry about that. I'd just like to remind everyone that the Rotary Club sponsors the Teachers Warehouse in Bloomington. And we support the teachers to, to encourage them not to have to take money out of their pocket all the time for small items, pencils, erasers, glue, you name the type of thing a teacher needs, the warehouse has it available. So we have, have had 50% of our teachers from Lawrence County go to the Teachers Warehouse and receive some free items. So we want you to know that the Rotary Club totally supports your efforts on behalf of our students in this county. So thank you so much. Go ahead, Rowena, if there's anything else.
Well, the only last piece of business I have for our guests is I did my best to keep up with how fast you were talking in terms of making notes, but if you would like to send me your own notes, you will probably be much better quoted in our minutes, which may or may not end up in the newspaper. Also, we do plan to release this on video. I hope everybody's okay with this, but if you're not, this would be a good time to let us know that. If you have notes you'd like to send to me, you can send them to me at, but you ready to write this down? If I didn't email you in the first place, it's rcross11@nsn.com. And I'll incorporate all of your notes into the minutes. Last thing is just thank you so much. I know that running for office is sticking your neck out. It's really exciting and takes, just takes a ton of nerve and a lot of time. We appreciate what all of you do for the community. I know that represented here are some really amazing people. And if you ever feel like you need more contact with like-minded people, let us know, you know, Rotary Club's here and we do a lot of cool stuff too. Thank you.
All right, we thank you so much for your effort. Anyone else with a comment?
Yes.
I want to thank Karen DeBois, who operated all the Zoom program today. That make, and I think we've had a very smooth conversation today. It's been very helpful. Anyone else?
Donna was trying to say something. Donna, you need to turn on your mic. We couldn't hear you.
Are you back, Donna? Okay, I didn't, sorry. One other thing, I admire all of you for running. And as a previous elected official, I will tell you, it is a thankless job and you will get, you will get feedback that is not positive sometimes. You got to have some thick skin and still do what you feel is right. And all of you have expressed that and I admire you for that. So best, best wishes to all of you.
Thank you.
Very good.
If anybody has a question?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay. If anyone else has any donations for the Teachers Warehouse or money to contribute, I'll need that by next Thursday's meeting. Did you hear that? Okay.
Ray, turn on your mic.
Okay, I'm sorry, folks. I didn't even know I'd turn it off. Maybe somebody else to, I mean, did you do that to me, Karen? I don't think so. All right. Well, we're going to say the four-way test. This is what Rotary lives by and we all want everyone to know that we always share this test with everyone. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build good? Will it build goodwill and better friendship? And will it be beneficial to all concerned? And of course we say, is it fun? I hope that we've all enjoyed ourselves today. Thank you, guests, for being with us. And all members will look forward to seeing you next week, same time, same station. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.